Everyone ready? All right, I'm going to call this April 11th Board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Perkioman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2022, and April 4th, 2022? I'm sorry? Oh, I sure did. I skipped the beat. A motion to approve the agenda as presented, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. The ayes have it. And we'll go back to 1.06, the motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2022, and April 4th, 2022.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second on hand. Any comments? Saying none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. We will now go on to comments from any topic. We'll have a timer up for three minutes. When you come up, please state your name and where you're from. And if you were on Zoom, please raise your hand so we could start to see if there's anybody in there. We'll start with the people in the room today who signed up. And we'll start with Mr. Bob Leggett.
Good evening. Bob Leggett, Perkioman Township. I'm rising to support, in the strongest way that I can, the approval of the purchase of the new Chromebooks. That's item 5.09 for tonight. The reason I'm doing this is, for me, it seems obvious. I actually can't believe that I need to explain myself on this. But please, give me your ears for these few minutes while I talk about this. Our district is currently at a one-to-one ratio with our Chromebooks. Meaning each student has a Chromebook in their hands to use, whether it's one that they take home or one that's in their classroom. This is a good thing. This is a sign of a quality school district. And it is one that I do not want to put in jeopardy in any way. If we do not pass the motion tonight to approve the purchase of 1,000 Chromebooks, it does become in jeopardy. It becomes a lot harder for our children to maintain this one-to-one ratio because we're going to be asking Mr. Ganesh and his department to basically cobble together as many laptops as they can to keep the one-to-one ratio. This isn't fair to him. And it says something about our school if we are to do this. These are tools that are in our classrooms. They're on the front lines with our students. I want quality equipment in my students' hands. I don't want them to worry about their battery dying or the fact that one of the keys on their keyboard doesn't work. This is part of a long-term plan to replace Chromebooks on a regular schedule, just like you replace oil in your car. Some new equipment goes in and the lifetime of our stock of Chromebooks remains reasonable. To me, this request is obvious. It's something that we should be doing as a school district in this century. What we also need to remember when we debate this issue tonight, because it is not a consent item, is what this is actually about. It's an equipment buy. It is the administration asking for equipment. This is an equipment to work out with. This is equipment to learn with, which is extremely important. It says something about us and what our priorities are. And this, to me, is an important thing. This is not a debate about the content that comes over these. You can find more porn in this library than you would be able to access on a Chromebook in our schools. It is not an issue about the teacher-student time and how students learn. That's something for curriculum. This is about hardware. And my time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. And I certainly know now I only have three minutes. I'm piggybacking on last week and so forth. And it sounds like discussing about the tennis courts and the use of them and whether or not pickleball was going to somehow going to get lined onto the tennis courts. I believe from last week, there's enough discussion was made to kind of separate the issues that resurfacing the tennis courts is not one in the same as building pickleball courts for the community. In fact, I understand that this pickleball has come by a, you know, a survey or so forth. I would love to see the numbers on that and the percentage of students that were on this petition for pickleball. Again, just reiterating, the unsafe. It would be unsafe to do this. The added lines on the courts makes unfair bounces. The courts, it would make skidding and the surface stay wet, much less the confusion that it makes for our student athletes. Again, I've been here 20 years as the girls' head tennis coach and also as the tennis instructor for our Perkioman Valley Community Education Tennis Program. This came up very last minute. I want to make sure that the emphasis is on our student athletes. It's obvious that the board recognizes the courts have not had the attention and the maintenance that they've needed for many, many years. I have been standing by, again with a paper trail to our former athletic director for many years, trying to get just general maintenance items for the safety of our students and to support them. And so to me, it's a priority that our tennis courts be taken care of before any pickleball courts are built, whether they be at West or anywhere at all, as I see it more of a fad. I'm not against pickleball. I know my girls can benefit from doing some of this. I plan on integrating it into our workout sessions and so forth, but it can be done on the tennis courts without any permanency whatsoever. And again, rather than something that seems to be a personal agenda, I'm here standing up for the student athletes to, you know, get their facilities taken care of and maintained. We still have gates that don't close. We have a backboard that's never been adequately repaired. We don't have the proper signage. We don't have security. I can't tell you how many years I've been told there's not enough money to fix the lights on the courts, Jen. There's not enough money to get a third coach, Jen. There's not enough money to, you know, clean the courts. There's not enough money to repair the cracks. If we have money to spend, please put it into our students, athletes, and their facilities as a priority and not a fad sport that's maybe here or gone like bocce and some of the others. There are lots of ways to play pickleball on tennis courts without it being permanent. I thank you for your time.
First, I wanted to thank Dr. Russell and Dr. Kloon and all of--
I apologize. Could you just state where you're from?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Sorry. Valerie Drury, Skipback Township. First, I wanted to thank Dr. Russell and Dr. Kloon and all of PV, as well as the school board for their efforts with the PV Woods dedication yesterday and to acknowledge the Lenape tribe. It was a wonderful event and I was honored to witness it. And a special thanks to Judy Lofton and all of her dedication to that event. I wanted to touch on the one-to-one Chromebooks specifically for the kindergarteners through second grade. There seemed like there was a topic of maybe not supplying those little ones with Chromebooks. My daughter is a first grader at Skipback Elementary. She has Mrs. Graff and she attends Magnolia Enrichment as her aftercare each day. I'm the face if the Chromebooks are taken away because I don't know if I would be able to give her the technology that she would need exclusively at home. So the district providing that technology is a huge benefit to my family. With the one-to-one, she is able to support her learning with reading aids, math seeds, and as well as just recently extra math. These are all supplied by the district. Her teacher has specifically noted that her math facts have improved and I think it's been because of the additional program of the extra math. I also appreciate her having her own device specifically for her to avoid potential cross-contamination of any sort of germs. The kids, despite constant verbal reminders and plentiful hand sanitizer, yeah, the little ones, they're not so good with that. So the fact that she would have her own device would reduce that risk. Upon entering kindergarten last year in the thick of pre-vaccination pandemic phase, it was a great relief that she had her own technology to use. It was not new, clearly. It was from a previous PV student, but it was a Chromebook and it was in working order for what she needed. And we were very happy and felt blessed to have it. It was very exciting to see her do her research on her animal project. I know that's something that Skipback Elementary does. I don't know if it's in all of the elementary schools. But to see her put together the research presentation and use Google Slides as part of her project and to create was a blessing. And I felt very excited that this is my district, that this technology and equipment is afforded to them. So thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to talk? There's no one on Facebook. There's no one on, what's it called?
Zoom.
Zoom. Thank you. My brain died.
Saylor. Allison Peterson, Trapboro. I wasn't sure if I was going to talk tonight, but I'm here, so I might as well. I want to thank the district for the Lenape PV Woods organizational event that you put on yesterday. It was very, very nice. I was not able to attend the whole time, but it's nice that the school district is in recognition of the historical nature and the cultural aspects of our community. And we're trying to bring all those folks together. So I want to just acknowledge that. Tonight, my comments are really going to be limited to the one-to-one initiative. From my perspective as a parent of a now high schooler and a fifth grader, what may-- be on the potential cutting block by the board that you're going to be deliberating tonight may not affect my children, but I do think it is a little short-sighted if there is not further debate and further discussion involving the educational professionals in this district, which are not necessarily the people that I'm looking at of the nine of you that have votes. Because I think what I understand the educational professionals are telling you is that this is something that is a value add to our community, that is necessary for our district, that is necessary to bring equity, as the previous commenter just stated, to all families in our community and make sure they have equal access to technology both in the classroom and outside. I believe you, Mr. Fallon, at the last meeting mentioned about Magnolia, and you see your students coming in after school utilizing that equipment that this school district has provided. Think that has to be part of your decision. And if your educational professionals and your IT professionals are telling you that this is a need, I think you need to seriously consider that. And if the board believes, whether it's from a financial perspective, for your budgetary reasons or whatever, that you need to have another conversation, then keep having the conversation. Table it for tonight. Because if you don't think that you have five votes to approve that, then further digging is needed because there's a lot of people in this community that do need it. And I happen to represent a lot of the poorest school districts in the state of Pennsylvania, and none of them are having this conversation. They all beg and borrowed to get that one-to-one technology in their schools at the start of the pandemic because they were not lucky enough to have the same resources that this school district had. And it was only basically because of either begging their community, entering into business partnerships with people in their community, or using the ESAR funds that they were able to achieve that one-to-one. You are in a different position than they are, but they're not having this conversation. They know the power that that technology gives to their families. Don't take it away from these families.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, and still none on Zoom. Excellent. Move on to section two. The April 4th special presentation was given at the last meeting. I assume there's no update there. Student liaison report was also given at the last meeting. No update. Welcome home. I do have a brief president report that I wanted to give. I want to, first of all, congratulate Dr. Kloon, Judy Lofton, and all the volunteers for the event that happened yesterday. I thought it was a really, really great event to be at. It was well, well-attended, and there were a lot of people that did a lot of work to make it happen. It was very nice to see multiple state representatives at the meeting, or at the meeting, at the event yesterday. Representative Penny Chuck, Mr. Cerisi, Representative Webster, Mayor from Collinsville, and many others. It was just a very well-attended event, and many people from the administration were there as well. So again, congratulations to, you know, Dr. Kloon, Ms. Lofton, and everyone who was really involved. It was a lot of young ones' effort to make that happen, and it was great to see everything happen at the community. It did make me think about what, you know, sometimes our job as a board member is. And so I've been lucky enough to be on the policy committee at Perkyum Valley in my short time on the board. And policy, to me, when we talk about policy, when we build policy, that's where the emotion should happen. That's where, when we're talking about what the policy should say, that's when the emotion of the argument should be placed into that policy. Once the policy is finalized, it should remain unemotional. And at times, I question if that actually happens in the district, and it's something that I most certainly would like to see tightened up. Once there's a policy, regardless of the emotion of the day, we should be following that policy. We strive to really be an inclusive community, and that means we have to respect everybody. Every holiday should be celebrated. Every holiday should be respected, and every individual should be respected, regardless of their race, their creed, or their gender, or their income. And that is really important, and that's something that, as we continue to grow and we grow that circle of bringing everyone together, that's what we need to figure out how to make that happen. It takes a village to raise a child, is what everyone talks about as an old proverb, and villages have different silos. And all those silos, when they work together, can really, really form a great, strong community. We have a community, we have board members that spend a lot of time on PV Foundation and Power Packs and other things throughout the community. We have members in our community that spend a lot of time raising funds for our community. And then we have a few that bloviate on social media and throw out abhorrent statements about board members. You know, if a board member objects to, for instance, how we spend our money in the weight room, that doesn't make that board member bad. But you go on social media, and the board members get ripped, and that's strange. It's strange to me because I've only been on the board for a few months. Boards should be able to talk and to debate without being ridiculed. The ridicule can come by emailing a board member or emailing the entire group and say, "This is my personal opinion." But the only way we're truly going to get better is if we stop be offending at, just to be offended, just to say, "Hey, I was offended by that." We should stop that, and we should really stop just using our fingers on social media or making TikToks on social media. That doesn't make us better. We should look at the people that are on the board who serve our district honorably, day in, day out, volunteering their time, and the few members in the community that do that day in, day out, not to make their child's life better, but to make the community's life better. And we should try to figure out how the policy can enable that to happen so that truly everyone feels like they're being recognized, regardless of who they are or what their background is, and making sure that everyone can come together and really be PV-strong. And I hope what we saw yesterday could be that snowball effect to make that happen. We should really be focusing more on the positive things and the positive people that happen. And I'll tell you, knowing all the board members on the board, I don't know them all that well, they all give back to this community in leaps and bounds. They volunteer their time. And I'm not talking about what happens in committee meetings and what happens at board meetings. That we got elected to do. We're no longer volunteers. We chose to knock on doors and chose to get elected, but they all give back their time. The way to really make a difference in this community, in this village, is to make a difference. And you can't make a difference by typing and hitting send. You can make a difference by getting into the street and making things happen, and that's where I hope we continue to strive to be. To that, Dr. Russell, do you have anything to add to your superintendent's report?
I do not.
Mr. Subers, do you have anything to add to your solicitor's report?
I do not.
There have been no board or district committees since we last met. Do any board members have anything they want to add? Seeing none, we'll go on to the approval for the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda is developed on April 4th, 2022. There are a lot of items on the consent agenda, so I will just say 4.03 all the way down to 9.06. That's on your board docs information. Do I have a motion for that? Seeing none, and nothing's coming off it. We'll move on to...
We need a motion.
Oh, we do need a motion. Yes, correct. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have one. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. So any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye, and against nay. And the ayes have it, and we'll move to education.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. 4.01, education update, part two. I believe Mrs. Smith is going to share with us.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for some time at this second board meeting to revisit with some education updates, part two. I would like to talk a little bit more about the Chromebooks and our one-to-one initiative this evening and also share with you, before we conclude, we have just received some of our comparable academic performance data to some of the schools in our county and to the state, and we're excited to share with you what that looks like for PV. So I just wanted to start out with some of the research, and we shared some of this with our school board over the weekend and certainly for the public's benefit. Project RED is probably the most prominent research that's been done in the area of technology and its impacts on education in the classroom. And granted, I will acknowledge this is from 2010, which seems long ago, right? But it is the most prominent research, and the fact that it's 2010 reminds me that in 2010, there were districts moving forward with a one-to-one initiative, and it's 2022 now, and we are one-to-one, and we would like to remain one-to-one. But this was the first research that really, in this field, talked about what do you need to have in place in a school in order to see the academic improvements from the technology? And I'm not going to read the slides, but you can see their hypothesis over there, really properly implemented educational technology will improve student achievement. But they identified nine key factors that needed to be in place in districts in order to achieve that academic improvement. And the slides will be shared, and there are links on each of the slides to the actual research, if you want to look at that a little bit further. These are the nine key implementation factors that they mentioned, and I will be the first to admit, Perkyum Valley doesn't meet all nine of them in every single one of our schools or in every single one of our levels, but we are well on our way in many of them in terms of online collaboration, our core subjects, online formative assessments, our student-to-computer ratio right now is one-to-one, virtual field trips. Those are all areas in which we've made leaps and bounds in the last couple of years, and as I said, on our way. In intervention classes, certainly the elementary, is much more ready for those interventions and the use of resources in those areas. But again, Project RED is one of the most prominent pieces of research. I am in my graduate classes right now. I searched Immaculata to look for, could I find something that was similar to this or that really made that connection? It was difficult to find something in the most recent years. So again, I go back to this. They also call out in this research and in these bubbles here are the things that you can see that are instructional impacts of having these devices in the hands of our students. Personalized learning being one I want to call out and something that our teachers really talk about, that the technology allows them to differentiate for their students. They are able to assign assignments to their children that for one of you might be one assignment, and to somebody else is something different, and it's seamless, and that the students in the classroom aren't aware of that, but the teacher's able to differentiate that. Or these programs that you hear about, Reading Eggs and Math Seeds, allow an individualized learning path for students that's based upon how did I do on answering my fractions or solving, you know, double-digit addition? And that path is unique for me and may be very different than the student beside of me, and allows the teacher then to determine what is it that I need to do next with this child or with this small group. You can see digital curricula is certainly, again, a lot of our tools are very digital now. Yes, we still have consumables, and we believe that's important to be in our students' handbooks or in their hands. But if you think about technology, it's current and it's up to date, so the resources and the information that we're able to have children access is current. I relate kind of a textbook to the car. The minute you buy your new car and you drive it off of the lot, right? It depreciates. The minute you have a textbook printed, it's out of date because something may be changing in our world, and it may need to be updated, or the style, or the activities that are in there. Learner-centered, we talk about student responsibility. These kids, they take ownership for that device. It's theirs, and they want to maintain it, and they want to make sure that it is safe and secure and that it's not being damaged instead of sharing with other students. We talk about collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and I'll call it engagement on this one. You know, while we want to acknowledge it or not as adults, devices are engaging to our students, right? You put a device in their hands, and they light up. Now, it depends what they're doing on that, and we'll talk in a moment about that difference between screen time in terms of educational use or recreational. But these are just three quotes that I kind of pulled out as well from Project RED. Technology also allows for immediate feedback. It allows for that anywhere, anytime learning for students. Collaboration tools, co-creating content, maybe with a classmate, maybe with somebody across the hall, maybe with a student across the world, and they're interacting and talking about what they think about something. Creativity, exploration, research, discovery. We're now producing instead of consuming. The other thing I like about Project RED is it really gives you a roadmap, and we looked at this when we were going through our digital transformation. It was one of the tools we used to kind of map out, well, what things should we be thinking about? And there were four areas that they really call out: planning, leadership, infrastructure, and professional learning. And I'm going to come back to them in a minute when I talk about how our plan for our digital transformation kind of rolled itself out. Before I get to that, I also threw in here some research, and I can't take credit for this. Dr. Parr very graciously agreed to help to find some of this because we've heard the concerns about the amount of time that our students are on a device or in front of a screen, particularly in response to the pandemic. We certainly increased that amount of time during the pandemic. The three main takeaways that she calls out here is that we need to make a distinction between what we call recreational screen time and what is educational screen time, and that it's quality versus quantity. So not necessarily the number of minutes, but what are students doing on that device during that time? And, you know, obviously in school, we think we are very meaningful and purposefully using these devices to move forward instruction. She called out two other pieces here. The American Acadia Pediatrics at one point did have kind of identified timeframes, but in 2015 changed that and does not identify a set time limit anymore, and talked about these three Cs, which they call content, context, and the individual child. What might be great for one child on a device may not be for another child, and this really allows our teachers to have that individuality with our students. So in terms of, if you're wondering, well, how much are our kids using it? We were able to survey our K-2 staff members this past week, Thursday and Friday, and I was really pleased that we had over 50 of our staff members respond in that short period of time. I show you here kindergarten, in particular, average minutes per day, and I broke it apart into two groups. The upper left is just kindergarten, general education classrooms, and you can see that all of those teachers who completed this indicated about 30 minutes a day. And I do want to call out that that time is not one sustained period. That is probably shorter chunks of time. You know, maybe it's a 12-, 15-minute station that they're doing at one point in the day, and then it might be another time a little bit later in the day. The lower right, though, we did also ask our special education teachers that support K-2 students, our special areas, meaning your art, your music, explorations, library, and then specialists would be your counselors, your IST teacher, your reading specialist. They all work with K-2 students. So we did include them, and you'll see slightly different in that bottom right, but still the majority is about 30 minutes for our kindergarten population. And I also then just wanted to show you first and second grade. You can see, again, the majority is still 30 minutes per day for both of those grade levels when you look at all of the staff that we're thinking about, but you do see some more disparity across those two grades. We also are driven by the standards. When we write curriculum, we think about what is in the Pennsylvania state standards and what is it that we need to teach. There are standards that drive out content as well as the product and the resources that we use, not in terms of a specific resource, but how do we have students accessing content? And this is recent, 2019, Pennsylvania put out the State Literacy Plan. They developed a framework to give to school districts to help guide us through how do we ensure that our students are developing those literacy skills? And I'll just call out essential element number four is all about 21st century classrooms, allowing 24 access to information, social interaction, creating and sharing digital content, engaging and personalized, some of the things that we've already noted. And I'll call out borderless learning territories. Again, we're no longer inside of a classroom in the four walls. It's very valuable what you learn from those classmates in your room, but think about now what we can learn from not having a border or a boundary of a classroom. And so these standards call that out in the literacy plan, as well as our academic standards for English language arts also call out. I just pulled two of them, one on writing and one specifically that says exploring a variety of digital tools to produce and publish writing in collaboration with peers. So how are our students using the devices? And again, this was a K-2 survey, so you can see we gave them several options here from center and station work to writing, independent work, collaborating, creating projects. And the last one was utilizing instructional tools like Reading Eggs, math seeds, extra math you heard. And you can see the highest are that last one and centers, and that makes sense to me because those go together. The use of those instructional tools like Reading Eggs are happening during that center time because it allows the teacher to work very directly with a small group of students based upon skills that most likely have been identified from their progress in those instructional tools. On the left, I noted for you that 25.5% of our teachers indicated they do use the device to provide accommodations. That might be text-to-speech, speech-to-text. It might be enlarging the print or some of those other accommodations that a student needs, whether they have an IEP, a 504, or just good general practice for all students. And on the right, 81% of our students indicate using devices to differentiate instruction and to drive their small groups in their classrooms. What are the tools they're using? You've heard some of these mentioned already. We have, obviously, our Google Suite, and the top two, though, that you can see there are really Reading Eggs and Math Seeds. And you might be wondering, and we heard from a parent tonight about how a kindergartner uses Google Slides. They do. They do research through the library or through their classroom, and they know how to create a Google Slide. You know, I think it was mentioned tonight, the animal project or research that they might do. They also use Google Classroom. Our teachers have classrooms set up. That's how they can share assignments that are differentiated. That's how they can post information, which is also helpful for a parent of one of our primary grade students to be able to log in there and see what has been shared and what their child might be learning. Again, I won't read these. You can see some of the things that I bolded, but the teachers that filled out the survey did give us some information or open-ended responses about what do they do with the information they get from Reading Eggs and from Math Seeds. It doesn't just sit out in, you know, the web. Our teachers actually look at, how did Laurie progress on that lesson that she was doing? What did she score on that, what looked like a fun game on fractions? How did she score? And what does that tell me about her strengths and her areas of need? And what group do I want to put her in then for our lesson tomorrow? Does she need to be enriched? Does she need some remediation? Is she right on grade level where she should be? And what other students might I have her working with? So they do use it to figure out individual needs, guide their future lessons, and develop those small groups. And I think some of the comments really help you to see that teachers feel that they are really giving more individualized attention to our- really giving more individualized attention to our students through the use of the devices in this manner. So back to that roadmap, I want to kind of point out these three, four areas that, again, Project RED describes to us as we went through our digital transformation. So the planning phase. Fall of 2017, we started initial discussion. So this is pre-pandemic. At that point in time, we had committees called Curriculum Advisory. We had TAC or Technology Advisory. Those were public committees, kind of like our education committee now, that had administrators, board members, teachers, parents, joining that and talking about how we wanted to move forward and what it could look like here. We then formed a digital transformation committee. That was an internal committee, had teacher representatives from all levels and from all buildings. We visited other districts to see what are they doing? What procedures do they have in place? And we formed recommendations surrounding devices, which devices to use, what grades, how we might phase an implementation, and what PD would be needed. And we developed policies and procedures like the acceptable use policy, the Chromebook Acceptance Form, and we also had a plan in place for how we would fund that. And the funding structure even from back then was partly Ready to Learn and partly the technology budget. This is just a graphic that shows you, this was used many times in that digital transformation committee. These were all of the little bubbles that we were beginning to think about as we embarked upon this process. And you can see our vision in the middle there of advancing our curriculum by giving students access to modern resources. So when it comes to the leadership, what, those three bullets there, what kinds of things did we did? We had lots of communications with our teachers. We had meetings with our students. We had parent orientations. Mr. Ganesh and I remember standing in the East auditorium when we were rolling out just to our ninth graders and we had large orientation sessions. I already mentioned the funding and we really worked with our leaders and our administrators in the buildings to what will this look like in a classroom? What does it look like when you observe in a classroom? What should you be seeing in terms of the use of technology? Not just using technology for technology's sake, but how are we using it purposefully? In terms of infrastructure, this credit goes to Mr. Ganesh and his department. We have come leaps and bounds in the last several years as well under his leadership in terms of connectivity in our district. Our AUP, the Chromebook Acceptance Form that's signed, even our distribution procedures with the little scanned barcodes, a very smooth technology support staff and the Viking Genius Bar is now servicing our own Chromebooks here internally. So lots of progress has been made in that area. And then in terms of professional learning, we have done a ton of professional learning in terms of the use of devices. And yes, it initially started with how do I use this and how do I use this piece of instructional tool? And it has morphed really quickly into what are the best tools to use for my purpose in my classroom and how can I really delve into that and have my students creating? And I'll point out, the first year I started in 1718 and Dr. Russell as superintendent, we had our hashtag #DoschoolDifferently. And we really talked to our students and our staff about the global world that our kids live in, real life, you know, non-traditional learning and being very much about learner agency. We've offered since June of 2018, 185 workshops that are targeted just at professional development for technology use. And there is a whole list attached there. You can see how many people attended each of them. And those are only sessions that we offered throughout the year. So if we did a full staff session on an in-service day, that's not listed on this document. So then in March 2019, we were ready to move forward. We rolled out to our ninth grade. That went well. And then in the fall of 2019, we purchased new devices for what was then the sixth and the ninth grade class. So sixth, ninth, and 10th graders pretty much had new devices. We were able to reallocate all the other existing devices in the middle schools and the high schools to be a one-to-one in grades six through 12 in that short of a time period from March into the fall. And we still had our Chromebook carts. We still had labs and we still had stations in the elementary. What I mean by that is maybe the back of the classroom had five or six Chromebooks or those old desktops in elementary classrooms with the intention that we always wanted to move into the elementary. And then the pandemic hit and really escalated what probably would have taken us several years escalated that. And you can see how that has played through. Anything in white here, remember, is an existing device that we had. And you can see some of them will last us out for many years. We did purchase additional Chromebooks with foundation funds and ESAR funds. We also had secondary students willingly give back their district issued device because they had one in their home. And they gave that back so that we could then reallocate them to our K to five. So at the start of the pandemic, we were able to have everybody one-to-one. So you may be wondering, well, what's your current inventory? So this explains the inventory and thank you to Mr. Ganesh for helping me put it together and understanding all of it. We have here the years that these devices were purchased, the models and the quantity that we have in each, and then the funding source for the most recent purchases. You will see we have quite a few devices that are 2017 or older. Since the one-to-one or digital transformation started, we've been purchasing the Lenovo 500E. That has been the device that is flip-top, it is touchscreen with the keyboard and a stylus as well. So we currently have 5,911 devices in our inventory. In the upper left here, this is how those 5,911 are distributed across the district right now. So you can see 5,100 of them are one-to-one in the hands of our students. About 300 are in inventory for spares, for loners. There are a certain amount in each building and through the Viking Genius Bar and technology support staff and our librarians, they help to assess when we need to assign loners. There are about 476 that are currently just being used for parts because they are beyond repair. Moving into the middle there, then, we have what we would project to be our assignments for next year out of that 5,911. 1,400 of them, Mr. Ganesh is estimating are at the end of life. They're either those that we are already using for parts or they are getting to that end of life. They're those 2014, 15, 16 models that need to be recycled. We still have about 200 of our 2017 models in there that we would be continue using for parts. They are our oldest devices. And I would like to mention, those are the ones assigned to our youngest students at this point in time. Our projected enrollment for next year, K to 12, is just shy of 5,000. We like to keep about 6% in inventory for those loners and spares. And of course, those would be the oldest devices that we have. That will leave us in the hole, 996 devices to, you know, once we recycle those older devices and try to have one-to-one. So you can see our recommended purchases for 1,000 devices for kindergarten, fifth and ninth. And in the bottom left, you can see our projected enrollments. Kindergarten is still pretty iffy, but we're ranging anywhere from 1065 to 1094. So that's how we came to our recommendation for the thousand Chromebooks that we would be seeking to move us forward. Allows us to keep our inventory current, that students have devices in their hand that are within the life of a Chromebook and continue to be supported by Google. So should K to two students have their own device? There were certainly questions raised last week and we hope that some of the information this evening will help you in making some decisions. I did want to share with you again what the teachers think. So we asked this exact question of them. Kindergarten, all teachers that work with kindergartens in the upper left, you can see that's probably around 95% are a yes. In the lower left, those that were only kindergarten, general education classroom teachers, 100% of them said yes. And then I gave you the K to two on the far right, which is again, the mid to high 90s So what would be the impact of fewer devices? Should the board decide, we're not ready to commit to kindergarten? What would that impact? It would certainly impact, I think, first and foremost is the instructional activities that happen in our classrooms, the center activities that happen, the instructional design that a teacher creates when they think about their lesson and how they're meeting the needs of their individual students. They would need to rethink that. Certainly, could we purchase, you know, five or six and have them shared in the back and still have centers? We could. Students will log in, log out for the next student to get there, which will be some transition time that we will have lost instructional time. And again, it's not their device that the teacher has the flexibility to say, Laurie, I want you to go work on this on your device right now. They'd really have to be think about, I can only have five. Who are the five students that are going to use it at that any time? Accommodations and differentiation, we'd have to think about how might we do that differently, which does feel like a bit of a step back in kind of maybe going back to that paper pencil or photocopying something really big for a student that technology just made very easy. Student creation, you know, if you think back to when I was in the classroom and we did a project, it was we're making a poster and we all got a poster and we all got our crayons out. And we were very limited in the choice and voice that we had. We would be limiting the choice and voice a little bit with our students. Right now, we give them a lot of, if we want them to do a presentation, they can choose to do a Google Slide. They can choose to do a video. They have a lot of choice in how they're going to express and share that. We have a lot of digital curriculum tools and instructional tools that the district has invested in that we would need to rethink about those subscriptions or how we're utilizing or accessing that. Is it worth the digital subscriptions that we have? Collaboration, ownership, responsibility, capabilities, research, our kids as young as K are researching. And we would have to think about the explorations and library classes. Our students do take them to those classes. So again, we could purchase five to six for like a station in the back of a kindergarten classroom. We would need to purchase some for the library because K students would not be bringing them. And explorations, we did do a walkthrough and you probably saw some of them have iPads in there. You might have seen some Chromebooks in the back. Those are some of our older Chromebooks. So we would need to ensure that when kindergarten goes to those classes, they have them as well. So Mr. Ganesh and I could do more work if the board certainly wants to move in that direction, but I would estimate for you, we'd still need to purchase probably about 100 devices to support kindergarten if we're not going to be one-to-one. And it certainly would have an impact on future years because this is a device that these students keep through fourth grade. So if we don't purchase it for them as kindergartners, will we purchase it for them next year as first graders? You know, or will we not? And then what does that plan look like? When is the right year for them to receive that device? So it is a longer-term piece. It might be a cost savings this year, but if we then institute them in first grade, we would still have three years of purchasing first, five, and nine, or a bigger change that we need to make for when students receive them. So just to give you some achievement, because certainly there, you know, there was concern when our PSSA scores came out, they're certainly not exactly where we would like them to be. But we do want to share with you some of the comparison data that we've been able to pull together in terms of other districts that surround us as well as the state, just so that you can see how we are comparing. So we'll start here with just some internet-based rankings. These are things that come out annually, you know, that typically we advertise or they are included in, I think you got the annual report recently. School Digger, we're typically, the past three years, we've been 40th or 41st. U.S. News is our high school only, we're 47th, and then Niche, 32nd. So certainly proud of those. And then we just recently, again, got the state. So what you see here is in gray, you see the Pennsylvania State percentage of students proficient and advanced on each of the PSSAs in the grade levels where it's administered. And in the orange color, you see PVSD. So while some of our scores in some of those areas, we would like to see higher, it is nice to see and look, there, every single area, we outperformed the state in terms of our percentage of students proficient and advanced. Not where we would like them to be. We certainly want them to be higher and we're striving towards that, but pleased to see that we are outperforming the state. And then Dr. Russell took some time to pull some of our comparable schools. So you have those districts that, you know, touch us really. We have Methacton, North Penn, Pots Grove, Souderton, Springfield, Upper Perk, and Wissahickin here in our county. And she was able to pull together, again, this is percentage of advanced and proficient by grade, by subject. So this is third grade ELA and we are the orange band here. And again, we are towards the top here, not the highest, but towards the top. In our math scores, you can see maybe around in the middle here. We move to fourth grade. I believe we are the highest here in fourth grade for our ELA, PSSA. Math in the middle of the pack here. And then we have science. Science is only administered in fourth and eighth. You can see we are 91.25. We are the highest here. Now we move into fifth grade. This is English language arts. And then we have our math. So I will pause there. I would like to just, I guess, end with that, that, you know, Mr. Ganesh and I and our administrative team, we strongly recommend moving forward with the purchase of Chromebooks in grades K, five, and nine. Certainly, whatever the will of the board is, we will work with or answer any additional questions that you have, but we strongly feel committed to this for the instruction for our students.
Looking back over the years when you've been implementing this increased devices, in these increased devices across all the schools, the scores have done nothing but drop year after year. The more devices, the lower the scores go. And when we jumped way ahead and got a one-to-one device for everybody in the school, the scores plummeted, absolutely plummeted. And talking about equity, they plummeted most for those in, of a non-white persuasion. So that is not equity and these Chromebooks do not encourage equity. The best education, well, I don't know exactly what it is, but I see the scores dropping and the devices going up. And we got forced ahead in this to a point where we were forced to go one-to-one. And that, all of these teachers, I don't know how much they're absolutely relying on this or how much they can step back, but I guess I'll leave it at my first question. Why are the scores dropping as the devices go up?
So good question. I think that I would respond with, we noticed in certain areas that our scores were going down, even decreasing pre-pandemic. And we were investigating those. So I'll use middle school math as an area. That's one that we noted pre-pandemic was an area that was decreasing scores. And we've been investigating that and attempting to determine what that is. I would say to you that those scores are a result of instructional practice. They are a result of alignment of curriculum, of state standards, and not a result of a device in the hands of our students. And the plummet, as you called it, with our scores, once we got devices, I would attribute to the pandemic because we got devices in March of 2020, K to 12, and that was right at the start of the pandemic. So we only had them prior to that from March of 2019. So that's why I respond to that. We do have a lot more to investigate with our scores. I just don't think a direct correlation can be made to the device is the reason that our scores have declined.
So how long do we let this go on? And how do we maintain our vigilance with monitoring these scores without being blinded by the fact that some shiny new thing is distracting us from the fact that we're not teaching our students?
I would disagree. I do believe we are teaching our students, but I would agree with you. We need to continue to monitor our scores. We are assessing them all the time. We're looking and drilling down to what those reasons are. Our teachers are getting better at using data all the time, you know, and the board supported the recent purchase of universal screeners for Star Math and for Star Reading to help us in doing that and help our teachers to really, you know, the elementary model of stations and regrouping, really, we can move that up into our secondary level and do a better job there. So I do believe we need to continue assessing the data. I don't believe that we're blinded, as you said, by a shiny device. I don't think that's the correlation again.
Ms. White?
Thank you for your presentation tonight. I think that it not only reiterated your well-thought-out presentation from last week, I think it just further elaborated on a couple of the different points as to how our buildings are able to really utilize the most up-to-date technology. With regards to scores and a correlation between devices and standardized test scores, as an educational professional employed by the district to guide curriculum and advancement of our students overall, can you talk a little bit about education of the whole child and how test scores may not be indicative of their actual takeaways and experiences in the classroom?
Sure. I mean, I think as educators, we have our own internal struggle with the state assessment and how much value do we put in that? Certainly, we want to see those scores be high and we want our students to be proficient and advanced, but there's lots of factors that go into that. And certainly, we think the best thing in front of our students is a high-quality educator and somebody who is trained in what are good practices in the elementary level, somebody who's trained in how do you teach students to read? What is the science of reading? What is the science of learning? What does that look like in the classroom? That, to me, is, you know, the priceless piece of education. This is a tool. This is like a textbook, in my opinion. It is replaced a textbook in some areas because some vendors don't print textbooks anymore, It is replaced a textbook in some areas because some vendors don't print textbooks anymore, particularly those areas that are constantly changing or being updated. So I think this really is a tool, and it's all about, as it always has been, you pick the right tool for the right moment and for what it is you're trying to instruct and for that child. So maybe there is a child in my classroom that I'm going to give them hard print because that's what they need, and another child might be using this device to access something. So I think it goes back to that teacher, and I think it also goes to valuing what amount of time am I putting them on a device? How am I taking care of their social, emotional needs? And that whole, that whole child that we're thinking about there. So I would value the teacher to be priceless, and this is a resource that we're putting in their hand that is the textbook of when I was in school.
So to follow up just on that point, would you, in your opinion, and I realize it's just, it's each educator's opinion, would you say that it is more important to teach with the best resources available or teach to the standardized tests so they perform in a way that produces tangible data results on a graph?
So I would go to your latter, to teach with the best resources available. And, you know, I can use my own children, they're not watching on YouTube right now, as an example for you. You know, I have one who is, they could take as many tests as possible, and they're just not going to score well, their results aren't going to be well. But if I were to sit down and have a verbal conversation with them, I could, I would have to pull a little bit, but I could probably pull out of them more of what their understanding is because the way that they learn is just different. So I think this test does, you know, it lends itself to a certain type of child who can produce in that particular testing environment. So that would be my personal opinion. The resources that we put in front of our kids are more important than a test score, but they are valuable for us in driving curriculum.
So, again, thank you for your presentation. And as someone who was on some of these earlier committees that you talked about, we had these technology committees, and we had a whole, well-thought-out plan about how to get the district to one-to-one. It was nice to see that progression and how far we've come. And I've also been able to do a lot of the walkthroughs and witness what you've talked about and seeing the students use these devices. And I just wanted to highlight three points that you made that really stood out to me. And the first one was that 25% of the teachers said they're using these devices to make accommodations. So I think that right there says that this does help promote equity. And then you also mentioned, I believe it was about 80%, use the devices for learning differentiation. And again, that's about equity, and it's about giving the students what they need. And I think it's just amazing that our teachers are able to do that. And I think we have talked a lot about why our scores are dropping, and I think this was one of the ways we started to address it, by how can we differentiate learning? How can we make sure every student's getting what they need? What is the software available? What's the technology available? So I think that I see the opposite. Rather than the devices are causing scores to plummet, I see it as this is one way we're addressing the problem. So thank you for pointing that out. I think those were really important points to make.
I think another thing, and again, the presentation was remarkable. One of the things to kind of consider is the fact that the PSSAs changed, I don't know whether it was the year of the pandemic or the year before, as far as what was being assessed. And I know that scores changed dramatically as the standards and the expectations of students changed, and we didn't really have any real measures to compare them to. So that's like comparing apples to oranges. So of course, our scores dropped because, as we know, with the Flynn effect, scores, when you change a test, students will not score as well as when they were taking similar tests previously. So to me, I'm not as concerned with that. The big thing is, when we look at ourselves in comparison with the state and local schools, we've really done remarkable, especially when we consider that a lot of those gains were made in the middle of a pandemic. The other piece of it is, is we have this new curriculum into reading, and many components of that curriculum incorporate technology and allow students accessing and expanding and enriching upon what they're learning through technology. To remove Chromebooks from K-1, 2, and not allow the one-to-one device is throwing money away with a curriculum that we bought that purposely targets enriching opportunities and differentiating opportunities for students. So I 100% in approval, and I think Chromebooks are a must.
I have some, do you want to go first?
Thank you. Thank you. That was very helpful, and thank you. You've given, you've worked really hard on this. So I appreciate all the information. My question is, so if you were to receive approval and move forward, how do we as a district, and how does the administration monitor and ensure that the Chromebooks are actually helping and moving our students forward and not, I don't know, keeping them at a plateau? Or how are they? And what would that timeline look like? Do we have, so not just test scores, but how do we assess the validity of, yes, we think the Chromebooks are working, but actually, are they doing what we want them to do for our students?
Sure. I think there's a number of ways that we do that, and it's not, again, a hard, fast number that I can get to prove to you that the Chromebook is doing something. But I think what happens in the classroom and that a principal is observing, to me, that's the most powerful, as your principals and your leaders in your district moving around, walking in and out of our classrooms, seeing what's going on in the classroom, and providing feedback to teachers. You know, monitoring, and every time I've walked into this classroom, they're on a device, or I've not seen them on the device at all, or wow, I saw what they were doing here. What does that look like? And I think, you know, Mr. Ganesh and I, every year, we sit down with the software budget as well, and he's really good at holding me accountable and saying, let's look at the usage. Let's look at the usage of reading aids. Let's look at the usage of math seats. Is it worth what we are investing in it? Or do we need to think differently? And I can use examples like the map assessment, ExactPath. There are things right now that we are considering not renewing because of the investment, the usage that we're getting out of them, and maybe they're not performing for us in the way that we want. And we reassess that. And again, Star Math and Star Reader are examples of how we're reassessing to try to also balance the time that we're spending on an assessment like that or a tool versus, you know, the time that we have in the classroom to actually be instructing our students. And so we're finding tools, and they constantly are emerging in technology that allow us to balance that with the time with what we're doing in the classroom face-to-face with our teachers. So I think it comes down to our observations, and I think every year, we need to, you know, it's not just a gimme. It's not just that every year we're doing this. It's a, let's look at, is it meeting our needs? Who knows what the technology might be like in two, three years that we may be saying to you, wow, we really think that this is the way to go. It's changing very rapidly. But I do think us being in classrooms and seeing that and monitoring and providing feedback and working with our teachers on, you know, even the Danielson framework itself calls out the use of modern resources. It calls out equity. It calls out, you know, universal design for learning. So I think being very adept at that and providing that feedback.
I have some questions. Ms. Mayor, do you have any more questions? Or you want to wait?
I have some questions, some of which you might have already seen because I did send in advance. So Project Red, I really appreciate, really appreciate it. It was a, I printed out all 180 pages and took a lot of notes.
I knew you would.
And formulated a lot of opinions on it, so I appreciate it. I'm concerned that it's a 12-year-old dataset, but focusing on what it actually states. Do you think that in two years' time, we will see a double in students' performance? And how are we going to define what a student performance is?
I think for, you know, the most common tool we use is the PSSA in the Keystone. Do I think we're going to double our performance? No. There's not enough room for us to growth to double performance.
Okay. What would happen if every student opt out of the PSSA? Because you can.
Well, the only PDE-approved exclusion is a religious exemption, but certainly, if that should happen, there would be, I believe, sanctions or something to, we would not be adequate yearly progress that the state would determine.
So the scores are important, then?
Oh, they certainly are important in terms of how the state holds us accountable.
Okay. So part of Project Red, part of their synopsis was that students' performance will double, but we don't believe that to happen. And one of the other things that Project Red talked about was it would decrease, and again, this is a 12-year-old dataset, so what we know isn't actually accurate, it would decrease the cost of education. And that has not happened, not just in Perkins Valley, but that hasn't happened anywhere in the United States of America. And actually, due to the technology, the cost of education is actually rising. Because if you look at Star, Star Reading, and Star Math, these are expensive programs that school districts need to get, and they're great programs. I, you know, I'm all happy for that. But one of my concerns with Project Red is a lot that's in that dataset, 12 years later, we know is not true. Education can't be doubled. Performance can't be doubled. We don't have a metric to study performance, and it's not decreasing the amount of education. What I did like was the nine core, the nine core subjects that the school could really start to optimize. So out of the nine, the nine core objects, how far away are we at PV from having all nine being put up?
Certainly, you make valid points, Mr. Saylor. I'm going to try to get back to that slide if I can.
Oh, and by the way, I appreciate everything that the entire admin team, I know I sent a plethora of questions, so I appreciate everything that's been put together.
There we go. So I think our elementaries, if I think about, when I look at this list, our elementaries are very strong in terms of their intervention classes. Our secondary is not, and we're working on our MTSS, and that's part of why Star Read or Star Math have come forward. You know, and you're, before I go back to that, your point about, you know, the cost of things, I think probably 10, 11, 12 years ago, the thought was the device might replace the textbook. What has happened, though, with some of our subscriptions is, quite honestly, the subscriptions force us to renew every six years, which is, yes, financially can be difficult, but is a good thing in that we're keeping current resources. Because at the end of six years, maybe it's not meeting its need anymore, and we have an opportunity to reassess that. But yes, I think that may have been the thought at that point. I really, I would agree with you, the funding part of it, I didn't focus on as much as I did on these particular pieces here. So the intervention classes, I think certainly at our elementaries are stronger just because we don't have structures in place in our secondary. Leadership by the principals, I think that, again, the, you know, we look for silver linings in things, and one of the silver linings in the pandemic was the growth in terms of instructional practices with technology tools. We would have not be at the point that we are at in terms of using Flipgrid, using Padlet. How do I use that purposefully? It's not just how do I, you know, manage it, and how do I turn it on and off? It's now the use of it. And so I think that our leaders have certainly gotten farther along with that, and I see them using that as well. Our students are collaborating. Our core subjects, for the most part, most of them have some sort of digital tool. I can give you an example. Elementary Social Studies curriculum is very outdated, resources very outdated. That's up for review next. So there's certainly pockets here or there that are not up to par with what some of these implementation factors would be. We do have lots of formative assessments that we use. We have Lincoln benchmarks, we have teacher-created ones. Certainly, number six, we're there, we're one-to-one right now. We do have some virtual field trips, we certainly could have more. And I certainly think we could also continue to improve upon our principal training. One of the last groups that we think about in terms of professional development is often that particular group. So I think that's an area where we could grow. So I think we're strong in many of them, or there's little pockets here or there.
Okay. One of the comments that was sent out, I just couldn't correlate it. So K-1 and 2, the average time is 30 minutes a day. So the thought process, if, you know, no one, I don't want to deny a student who doesn't have access to a computer or internet to have that, okay? I'm 1,000%, I think one-to-one's great. I'm, so this is a technology ask and an educational ask. I am more concerned on the educational aspect. When we say, we don't know what we would do to replace 30 minutes of computer time, how can I correlate that in my mind, how 30 minutes is such a big deal? When you're talking about for kindergarten, I think it's two and a half hours, right? And then for a first or second grader, they're there for four hours maybe of educational time? How do we correlate that? And there is data over the past few years that fine motor skills, specifically K-1 and 2, are literally going away. When I was knocking on doors, running for the election, I ran into a lady, she worked at this school for a very long time. She taught writing, and she doesn't work here anymore. And I spent an hour with her about writing, just talking about writing. And then she put into my brain what is going to happen with the fine motor skills of a K first and second grade. Now, I toured the school in South. I didn't see a lot of Chromebooks being used except for the one class where they were using the iPad devices, and they were playing, you know, playing these games. I don't understand the, well, if we don't have, well, everyone should have it if they need it, but if we don't have it in K-1 or 2, why would that be such a big deal to replace 30 minutes? And how can we make sure if, when we do have these things, that we're also focusing on fine motor skills? Because you can't send someone to Monco Tech if they spend all their days, K first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and they're just doing this. When they get to Monco Tech and they need to use these things for HVAC, for plumbing, for everything that they get taught there, that's, where is that skill coming from? So as we continue to move this trend to technology, how do we make sure that we're also developing those fine motor skills specifically in K-1 and 2? Now, the motor skills have diminished over the past five to six years, so it's pre-pandemic. So to Mr. Keenan, that could be as the rise of technology, the decrease in fine motor skills. And I know that, you know, some governments have reduced the amount of words that they want a child to learn. I want to see more rigorous education. How would we just, and I only have two more questions after that, how would we address that aspect of it? Like, where is that 30 minutes? Why does that become, oh, my God, what are we going to do?
And I don't, I don't think it's an, oh, my God, what are we going to do? I just think that that 30 minutes is crucial to particularly a kindergarten classroom and any of our primaries because it centers and it's stations. And the technology brings the ability to differentiate that. So if we think about stations, to many years ago, you were all going to a station here, and I might have had a worksheet there that you were all going to be doing, but all of you at that station did the same worksheet. And it wasn't differentiated that Laurie got what she needed, Mr. Saylor got what she needed. And so I think teachers will really have to think about that time differently, and it may be less differentiated. Now, if we have, you know, the five or six that could be in the classroom at the time, it's certainly, we can still maybe differentiate as they're logging into things. But teachers will need to think a little differently about how they plan for that time. And I think the 30 minutes, you can look at it both ways. You can say, it's a lot of time in a kindergarten's time, or it's only 30 minutes, so what does it matter if we don't have that there for them? But it's crucial learning time that really allows the teacher to have five or six kids in front of them around their kidney-shaped table, and I'm working together with them. And I think, you know, we have to respect the professional judgment of the teachers to balance that. And so what I saw in South in one of the classrooms was those strips of paper that the student was there with the marker in their hand, writing their Ps or writing their other letters. And so we value that the teacher is balancing the time that they might be in a station on a device with the time that they are practicing those fine motor skills. And, you know, we would agree, we've seen a decline in that, more OT, you know, requests that have come through, and we're trying to analyze that as well and figure out what that is. But while we want to prepare them for what you talked about at Monco, we also want to prepare them for the world in which they're going to live and work in, which these devices are going to be present in their lives, and making sure that they are adept at using them and able to move into whatever those careers could look like in 20 years when they are adults.
But what's the most advantageous time to work on fine motor skills? Fifth grade or first grade?
Oh, of course, it's our, it's our younger years, absolutely.
Two other things. The presentation on the workshops, you know, so for instance, 2017, it was towards the back end. 2017, we weren't one-to-one, right? So we start going one-to-one specifically in 2020. The largest-attended workshop was a paraprofessional workshop in secretaries. The workshops have tremendously dwindled down in size. Are we, are we, not we, not me, are, is the admin feels, though, we need more attendance for these workshops to get the biggest bang for the buck? Or are we happy with the people that have attended these workshops? The last workshop only had six people attend. Though, you know, we haven't had a workshop that had over 40 people attend in nearly two years. So I was kind of awestruck that the largest-ever-attended workshop was for paraprofessionals and secretaries rather than, you know, teachers.
And most likely, that was a required one of their positions. So just to clarify, the lists that you have are what we call flex workshops. So these are offered, our teachers have to do 18 hours of professional development across the course of their year. Most of them do them in the summer. They are choice. So they get to choose what date they want to attend something and which topic they want to attend. So I mentioned earlier, this doesn't include things on like an in-service day where maybe we did a session for all staff on use of EdPuzzle, or how might you utilize that? The other thing that I can say to you is that, again, a silver lining in the pandemic, the most-attended workshops occurred from that March of 2020 to the end of that year, where we had actually, it was Dr. Parr and Mrs. Lainhart, voluntary sessions every morning before school, after school. Those were highly-attended sessions because teachers, you know, they felt the immediacy, and they needed to, and that really did absolutely move us forward in that particular area. So I think there's certainly more attendance, and things that we want to require of teachers to use, we certainly build them into the schedule on an in-service day other than having it as a choice session.
Okay. And my last question would be, does the administration look at this more of an educational item that they need, or do they want it for the finance? Because one of the comments that I saw was that we needed to do this, and this was an old comment from before the pandemic, to ensure sustainable funding. And to me, that's not an educational reason to go, again, one-to-one, great, but how we're using it as an educational tool, and how are we having our students get a more rigorous education to see that, well, we need to do this to ensure sustainable funding, kind of took me, and again, I wasn't on the board, I wasn't in the committee meetings that happened in 2019, 2018, 2017, but to read a comment that it helps ensure sustainable funding, to me, isn't an educational reason for it.
So I would say to you, I would not be standing here advocating as, you know, the leader of the Curriculum Instruction Department, this was not an educational decision. So I believe, again, it's not just a tool for a tool's sake. It is the best tool in terms of providing some educational instruction to our students and allowing us to differentiate. So that's where I believe that it comes from. If I, if I recall what you are referring to, the ensure sustainable funding was when we were talking about a digital transformation, if we wanted to go one-to-one, we didn't want to just have money one year to be able to do it. We wanted to be able to ensure that we could continue to sustain it if we felt like we were supporting it in something. It wasn't just good for the kids this year, it was good for the kids in the future. So I don't think it was a goal in the way that you've interpreted it. It was a goal that if we're going to do this, we want to ensure that we can fund it. And that's why Mr. Ganesh and I worked really hard together to figure out, how can we support, you know, initially, it was one grade level of purchase, then it was two, then it was three. How do we do that? And he's given up funds in his budget, and we've used part, we get a half a million dollars of Ready to Learn, and we take about 140 of it every year to get one of the grade levels. So that was what we meant by ensure that we could continue to fund it as we moved forward.
Wouldn't you agree that considering the schools in Pennsylvania and across the United States, or most of them are going and continuing with the one-on-one initiative, that by not continuing here in PV, we are making our students, kind of setting them behind that of their peers in other districts across the Commonwealth as well as the country? And that when we want to prepare students for a global economy, they need to have the technology skills to go along with that. So if we have a student who's in PV, and they happen to have a family member who moves due to a job, and they have to go two districts down the road, and those kids have had computer one-to-one initiative from kindergarten on, and they didn't because we're in PV and we decided to halt it and go backwards instead of forwards with the way of the world, we're setting our students up to not be able to keep up with peers.
So I, I will admit, I have not looked across the country to see who has one-to-ones and who doesn't. So I certainly can't speak to that. I personally believe that we've gotten to a point where we're one-to-one, that we want to continue with that. And I think Mr. Ganesh even just mentioned this morning, we were one of the last in our county to be in this position, to be one-to-one. I would like to see us continue to move forward and continue to provide it. I believe it is, become just a staple of education now, and what a modern classroom looks like and a modern resource that we are giving to our students. And that's why I'm here recommending it.
No, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Saylor, you made a comment about the 30 minutes and what would we do if we didn't have that in the classroom. I think that we also need to remember that the Chromebooks are not just about the 30 minutes in the classroom. I've heard from a lot of parents that they rely on Google Classroom. It's really nice to be able to go in and check what your students have due every day and to keep up on things, and you can get the emails sent to you. And so it's, it's helpful beyond that 30 minutes. It's really helping students and parents communicate with teachers and organize things. And I think, again, going back to the equity, some families may have devices at home and they could do that without providing the Chromebooks, but not everybody does. And this ensures that all students are using the same type of device and they are accessing things equally. Again, I think we need to look beyond just the time it's being used in the classroom.
I just wanted to wrap up and say that I, I think that the points that you made, Mr. Saylor, about, you, you made valid points, but to me, my impression of, of your, of what you've surmised was sort of like to catch up on the last five years of progress, right? And, and that being said, you know, to, to use this ask to do that, I think it, it sort of undermines the, the trajectory of, of the district in general, although the points that you made, being valid, those are more philosophic, to me, those are more philosophical, educational, foundational responses of where education is going in the country and how it will get there. And those are debates that, no doubt, the educators of tomorrow are having in their college classes right now, and certainly in the higher education. You know, I know that Mrs. Smith is pursuing her doctorate. I'm sure that those are conversations that they engage in as to where the country is going and how they should get there with what tools. And so, you know, you have to play a lot of catch-up. So to look at, you know, Project Red and cite it as irrelevant, maybe components of it are irrelevant, but certainly the points that Mrs. Smith pointed out, those still ring true, but there's evolution, right? So over time, opinions change, knowledge grows and changes, and so therefore, you're able to grow and adapt. So by continuing on a trajectory of, of progress with technology and resources, if we're able to, and to one of the commenters made the point that, you know, other school districts don't have the luxury of, of debating whether or not, you know, if it's not about money with this ask, this is really just to continue on a trajectory that was already established and set in place, we're just moving it along. So I, I guess it's not that I feel as though the, the points that are raised and the questions that were asked are, are not important or not valid. I just don't think that holding up an initiative for a hardware ask, it, I just, it, it's like, they're counterproductive. We should still have the conversations, but it, it should be in a separate lane then, then it shouldn't be at the, at the expense of the hardware, I guess, is my, is my feeling. So I just, I just hope that we can continue to, I mean, and we're one school district. You know, this is not, this is like a Pennsylvania problem. This is a, to see that our scores are that much better in Pennsylvania, clearly, there's something bigger happening in Pennsylvania. There's very poorly-funded schools in Pennsylvania whose scores are reflective of that. So, you know, I, I just feel like you can't solve a, a national problem, a, a global problem on the local level, but we can assure that we have the right resources and the right tools for our students in our community. And that's what we need to focus on, because the conversations are important, but as, as a local school district, we're not going to solve the, the statewide problem. We're not going to solve the national problem. And I think that we just have to keep our focus locally.
First and foremost, I would applaud you from your tenacity. You have done a terrific job in, in fielding every question, and it sounds, and, and being an educator, what you have presented, you've done your homework, and you have done an outstanding job with that. I can speak from the lower levels with students that I see daily, and students that my son has seen even longer daily. And he has seen these as being an outstanding tool that the kids have used daily, not during class, after school, when they have a chance. They work together, they collaborate together, they're working at tables and comparing notes, going back and forth. I got this, I got this. I mean, they are very actively engaged in educational enjoyment, which I think is what a lot of it needs to be boiled down to. I think that it's very difficult when you start to think about the idea, are kids using technology far too much at this point in time? Yeah, they are, but that's after-school hours, and that's not on school things. That's on things that need to be addressed elsewhere. For educational component or educational purposes, I see this as being an outstanding opportunity and a place in which to grow.
Thank you for sharing, and I think I'm ready to defend my dissertation after tonight. Maybe I should change my topic, so. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much for the time and the conversation. I do really appreciate you thinking this through. Thank you.
So 4.02 was the enrollment port that was given last week. 4.03 through 4.07 are all on consent. Do we have, I have a question then. Are we, do we have a motion later on for Chromebooks? Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Door?
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. 5.01 was the finance update done last week. 5.02 was the grants and donation report last week. 5.03, 4, and 5 are all on consent. 5.06 is a motion to approve an agreement with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide a licensed mental health counselor two days per week at a rate of $8 per hour, effective April 12, 2022, through June 15, 2022. An ISO move.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
5.07, 8 are on consent. 5.09, it's a motion to approve the purchase of 1,000 Lenovo 500E Chromebooks for the one-to-one initiative at an approximate cost of $409,750. An ISO move.
Second.
Second, Dr. Colar. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against nay?
No.
The ayes have it.
5.10, 11 to 512 are all on consent. 5.13, it's a motion to approve top A court to resurface all 12 tennis courts at the high school campus at a cost not to exceed $120,000. An ISO move.
Not hearing a second? But if we don't hear a second, it's going to be removed from the agenda.
5.14 is on consent. 5.15, it's a motion to approve the Montgomery County Planning Commission to conduct a walkability bike study for the district buildings at a cost not to exceed $12,000. An ISO move.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Roll call? Yeah, we'll do, I got it. Roll call?
Dr. Campley?
Aye.
Mr. Door?
Nay.
Is that, uh, she's absent? Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Nay.
Dr. Colar?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Yes.
Saylor?
No.
I have five yeses.
There you go.
5.16, 5.17, 5.18, and 5.19 are consent. 5.2 is a new item. It's a motion to approve the rejection of the athletic trainer bid, response is as received on March 2, 2022, at 2:00 PM, and authorize administration to enter into direct negotiations with potential vendors as necessary. An ISO move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? That one was much easier. The ayes have it.
That ends my section.
Thank you very much. Dr. Campley?
Section 6, Payment of Bills. 6.01, the action is for a motion to ratify the payment of bills and payroll as per the list submitted for the period ending March 31, 2022, and to authorize the payment of bills on the check and voucher registers submitted for April. An ISO move.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
6.02, the action is a motion to approve the treasurer's report and financial statements, including summary of cash and investment accounts as prepared by the administration for the period ending March 31, 2022. An ISO move.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
Section.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the ayes have it.
Ends my section.
Dr., uh, excuse me. Mr. Keenan?
All right. We have Section 7, Professional Personnel. Section 7.01, 02, 03, 04, 05, 06, 07, 08, 09, and 10 are all on consent. And then we have Section 7, 11. We have a new item. Looks like I'm going to make a motion to approve the compensation agreement for the business administrator. I didn't know we had a business administrator. No, no, they, we changed his title. It was a joke. To approve the compensation agreement for the business administrator, effective July 1, 2022, through July 30, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was June 30. He said July 30. Do we need to correct that?
July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2027, seconded by seven people.
Don't leave him.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Let the record show unanimous vote. That ends your section. Dr. Colar?
Section 8, Support Personnel. Items 8.01, 2, 3, 4 are all in consent. Item 8.05 is a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement with Perkium Valley Education Support Personnel Association as presented related to summer compensation. An ISO move.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
Item 8.06 is a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement for the Maintenance Custodial and Food Service Association Agreement as presented related to recruitment and retention. An ISO move.
Second.
Second, Dr. Campley. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
Item 8.07 is a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement for the ma, oops, sorry, for the Maintenance Custodial and Foods, wait a second. Is this the same? Yeah. It's, it's different? Okay. Oh, because this is for the pool, sorry. Motion to approve a memorandum of agreement for the Maintenance Custodial and Food Service Association Agreement as presented related to compensation for the pool operator. An ISO move.
Second.
Second, Dr. Campley. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it.
And item 8.08 is on consent, so that concludes my section.
Thank you very much. Governance, Ms. White?
Thank you. Item 9.01 is a first reading on policies as listed. 004.1, student membership, 3, uh, 2.2, 3.2, participation in school governance, 605, tax levy, 800, records management. Item 9.02 is approval to hold second reading and adopt policies as listed. 608, 609, 615, 616, 617, 618, 626.1, 710, 812, and 813.
Is there a second? No, it's not. No. Is there a second?
Motion is for the second reading.
Not seeing a second? I have a second, Dr. Colar. I have an amendment. I have amendment to remove 618 student activity funds from this.
Second.
I can move on you.
So all in favor to hold, all in favor on the motion which would remove 618, which is student activity funds, from the second reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it, so 618 will go back to Policy Committee? Thank you.
Yes. Did you say ayes have it?
Yeah.
Okay. 9.03, 4, and 5, 6 are on consent. 9.07 is a new item. It's a motion to approve an exception to policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students to allow a student to continue attending South Elementary from May 9, 2022, through the end of the '21, '22 school year as a non-resident student beyond the 20 days prior to the last day of school as indicated in policy. An ISO move.
Second, Mr. Door. Any que, any comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
That ends my section.
Thank you very much. And thank you for filling in.
If I may, sorry, don't mean to interrupt. I don't think we voted on the main motion to hold a second reading. It would be for 608, 9, 15, 16, 17.
We don't have to.
Okay.
It was a friendly amendment, so we, we were actually voting.
On the motion?
We're actually on the amended motion.
Okay, I.
For the second reading.
Just heard, otherwise.
The, the intent was to vote on the amended motion.
Very good. We're all good? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the Zoom? This is great. Comments from board members? Dr. Colar? Mr. Fountain? Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Door, Mr. Keenan, Dr. Campley, Ms. Mares?
I just, again, want to thank Lori for really going the extra ten miles on this Chromebook initiative, and I really appreciate it, and I appreciate that the board is able to have that conversation and, and learn more and make a well-informed or a better-informed decision when we're spending that type of money that impacts all our students, so just thank you.
I will just say that there are many people that are concerned about grades going downward rather than going upward, and that doesn't make anyone have any evil intentions or anyone be bad, everyone should be concerned that grades overall, not just in Perkium and Valley, but in Pennsylvania and in the United States, are going downward. And in PV, because we have a great board, our goal is to make sure that those, those, those grades start to go up, and we have to uncover every single potential obstacle in the way of making that happen.
Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Sailor, I have two things. One, congratulations to Mr. Weaver for another five years, we're really very happy to have you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your confidence, and Mrs. Weaver's very happy.
Well, we are too, so thank you. And secondly, I also wanted to just comment on the conversation that happened around Chromebooks as resources for our students and our teachers in the teaching and learning experiences. I appreciate all of the questions that were posed, it prompted thinking on our part, and we hope we came prepared tonight, and it sounds as if we did, to really help you to be better informed as you took this action this evening, very appreciative. I would like to offer anyone who has questions, the opportunity to have more conversation, you know, we can talk through some of the things that continue to raise questions for you and your thinking about the experiences of our students and maybe the expenditure on the part of the district. So I wanted to leave you with that thought, and again, thank you for your support of that program.
Thank you very much. Just want to make note of the notice of video recording disclaimer for everyone to read, I will rule German, and also note that the executive, that the board held an executive session at six fifteen today for the purpose of legal.
Thank you.
[inaudible][1777.22]